They call the meeting to order. Let's see. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anything that needs to be taken out of the agenda or changed? Any concerns about the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
You have a second?
Yeah, a second.
All in favor, do I?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, so moving on to celebrations and communications. Superintendent Johnson?
Our celebration is for our two, I guess I would say retiring trustees, Vice Chairman Thomas and trustee Johnson. And I believe you, trustee Nixon, had words to say about Vice Chairman Thomas and I believe Chairman Grant is going to say a few words about.
I do have a few words to say. Do you want me to just do it here?
Sure.
Okay. Just so you know, this is going to be a hard night for me. It's not going to be easy, but that being said though, I need to tell you that I have the privilege of saying a few words about trustee Thomas here. And I'm going to start off with three amazing words. She is amazing. She's been a great, great trustee. She, the first time I met her, she took me under her wing and she said, "I need to show you a few things. Do you know about Kuna Masno?" And I said, "No, I don't know about Kuna Masno." At that time, I knew nothing about Kuna Masno. And she said, "Well, let me tell you." And she showed me. Now, sometimes I wish she hadn't shown me, but she did. And not only that, she really took me under her wing. She taught me about Robert's Rules. She taught me how to make motions, which is something that was not up my alley. She taught me about open meeting laws, and for that, we will truly miss her. She knows her stuff. She also, she challenged me to be a better board member. One of the first times, I was on, I'd only been on the board a couple of months, and she says, "You've got to go to ISBA." I said, "Okay." She dragged me there. We got a lot of swag, which I totally loved. And then, I learned so much, trustee Thomas, on what to be a good board member. And I continue to learn every time I go, and it's because of you. And then about two years ago, she really stretched me. She said, "Hey, how would you like to teach a class at ISBA with me and Allison?" And I went, "Oh, no, no, no. I'm an elementary teacher. I teach kids. I do not teach adults. I don't go there." She goes, "You can do it. You can do it." And sure enough, I did, and I thank her for it. She has been a leader among making this one of the best boards in the state. She leads us in book, I think we can all admit, book, what do I say? Book studies. Yep, she does book studies with us. She's made sure that people come in to teach us things, and that's another thing that will be missed. But I think the thing that I will miss the most, besides sitting next to her at every meeting and having some good laughs, is I know her what. I know her why. And that's Kuna kids. Every decision she's ever made has been about them. And for that, I am so grateful for you to be on this board. But not only that, I know that we will see each other. This isn't the last. It's not the end, because you've become my friend, and I appreciate that. But not only that, because of your what and your why, I know that you will be serving on committees to make a change for these kids in this district. And for that reason, I would like you all to join in and celebrate trustee Thomas tonight as her last night and her eight years she gave to the Kuna School District. So, thank you. I appreciate it. There you go. Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to make you.
Thanks a lot, Kim. Sorry, Russ. But, so I've been on the board for nine-
You're not going to make me correct?
I'll see what I can do about it.
I've been on the board for nine years, and there's always been a lawyer on the board. And so, I have been super grateful for Russ and the time that he's spent. I know he's probably gotten tired of me because I call him quite often and ask him his opinion about things and get his legal advice sometimes, and I don't pay for it. And then, over the years, I've also tried to get him out on the horse with me. I haven't done that yet. And I've also tried to get him on a couple of hunting trips. That hasn't happened either. But now that he's not on the board, I think he might have some more time. I might be able to get him in the mountains with me. But, yeah, the same thing, it's not over. You're still going to have to hear from me once in a while. And I just want to say thank you for all your time.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you both for your service to our children and families and staff. Thank you.
Okay, so, do you have Kuna Way Awards?
Yeah, I'll make this, not quick, but I will give credit to trustee Thomas for making this more public. He used to do Kuna Way Awards and just go around to the schools. And she said, "I want to celebrate these people in our board meeting." So, we have one of our celebrants here. Let's wave at her. I thank you so much. We know she likes attention. We have Jocelyn, Alice, Mary. She here? Mary's a Reed teacher. Janay's a Reed teacher. Nicole. And we have our amazing staffer at the district office with all of their help and extra work they did for the audit. Thank you, chairman and trustees. Good people here.
Okay, so, what everybody's been waiting for. We want to hear a report on the Reed Elementary School.
Yes.
They're going to get themselves in order. While they do that, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us this evening. We are excited to be here today to highlight our dual-language Fiesta. This is our annual community event that provides the opportunity for our community at Reed, dual-language and non-dual, to come together and celebrate the talents of our dual-language program, teachers and students, to celebrate our cultural diversity, and to enjoy entertainment, lots of really great food, friendship and more. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Maestra Cher. She was our dual-language fourth-grade teacher, but she's also the dual-language coordinator for the district. When I look at you, you're going to nod. Super nervous.
And smile.
And then, we welcome some of our students with us tonight. We have Graham, Camila, David, Ernie, Selway, Maddie and Giovanni. And they each have a little piece for the Fiesta that they're going to share with you. I'm going to share a brief history of the program. As Mrs. Moore mentioned, my name is Courtney Cher. I'm glad to be here tonight. We started Fiesta as a part of Down Home Country Christmas all the way back in 2011. Actually, there was very few pictures taken back then. I had to search both the district and the Chamber of Commerce and Reed Elementary. We didn't take pictures, apparently. So, I did find a few from back then, including how we were filling Fourth Street Gym. But we started back in 2011, working with the Chamber of Commerce. We sold tamales and tacos and desserts. We brought in our dual-language students to do some singing. We participated as a part of Down Home Country Christmas for six years. At that point, our program had grown so much, we were just absolutely overfilling the gym and it wasn't working. So, we needed to move our event back over to Reed. But we still work with the Chamber of Commerce every year. We're communicating with them to make sure that we don't schedule our event for the same weekends, so we can continue to support their events as well. So, we do continue to hold that event every year. We're still growing, adding every year different parts of that event. This evening, we have several of our dual-language students who are actually going to be sharing a Fiesta acronym with you to celebrate some of the festivities from this year's event that took place a little bit less than two weeks ago. So, we're going to turn it over to our first presenter.
Hello, my name is Graham. I'm a fourth-grade dual-language student. The S of Fiesta stands for Festival of Trees and Ornaments. The ornaments were made by students from both dual-language and non-dual-language classes. This project is organized by our English-language teachers in the title Team at Reed. They set up all these beautiful trees to match the themes of the ornaments East grade level makes. For example, the Rustic theme of the fourth grade who made Idaho ornaments or the Grinch ornaments for their grade. Every fourth grader even got to make their own pearled beet ornament. Families come and are able to buy ornaments for a donation of any amount.
Nice job. Nice job. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tanga. I'm a fifth-grade dual-language student. The I of Fiesta is for including all families. As the dual-language Fiesta has grown, teachers at Reed have tried to include more of the classes to make sure all families are invited and feel welcome. It is now called the Reed Fiesta, and although it is a fundraiser to support the dual-language program, all families are invited to come enjoy this exhibit and try. As you can see from the pictures, there were a lot of delicious tacos that are on the dinner tables. We sold out, we sold out of almost all the food during the three-hour event.
Hi, my name is David. I'm a third-grade dual-language student. The E of Fiesta is for entertainment. Every year during Fiesta, there are two music programs. The dual-language teachers work with Reed's music teacher, Miss Baker, to choose songs in both English and Spanish for one program. For kindergarten through second grade and in the rhythm course, third through fifth, one song. It's by a song by Alfred, and it's been one of the songs performed since Down Home Country Christmas started in 2011. The fifth graders perform a bilingual chant for Twelfth and Ninety-Four Christmas with all the Reed's students in class. So, we also learned a fun dance to go along with the one that he done, song Allegra Ringo.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Ronnie. I'm a fourth-grade dual-language student. The S of Fiesta is for senior celebration. The last five years of Fiesta, we have added a very special part celebrating the soon-to-be graduates of the dual-language program. The seniors, along with their families, come to be recognized. To their college and careers lines, along with how they plan to use their bilingual skills in the future. And some seniors share advice for the younger dual-language students for success. We have a hallway of posters honoring the seniors and give each one a certificate and a small gift of a Kuna dual-language hat and luggage tag. To go along with the idea that language takes you around the world, part of the money raised at Fiesta funds two scholarships for dual-language graduates awarded at Senior Awards Night, which is coordinated with the Kuna Education Foundation.
Nice job.
Hello, my name is Sola. I'm a fifth-grade dual-language student. The T of Fiesta is for tamales. Tamales are a food traditionally made and eaten for Nogajwana or Christmas Eve. The last five years, the fifth-grade families have started making the tamales that are sold at the Fiesta. It's a fun night for the families to get together, and for some of them, it's the first time they have ever made tamales. And for others, there's a chance for them to share a part of their culture and knowledge on how to make tamales. This is the year, this year, we made about 600 tamales in about two hours, which is about how much time it takes for them to sell out. They definitely go fast. Yum.
Hello, my name is Maddie.
I'm a dual-language student. We are fifth-grade dual-language students. The A of Fiesta is for activities. All of the activities that Fiesta or Daybook completely free. We offered art and crafts such as scratch-off oncoming, making and book cards. We made face painting, which is always their favorite. I bring my game called Bakari and a game called Tomatodos, both for the candy, which stays up. The students and family play the games together in both English and Spanish.
We also had a photo booth set up for families to capture the smiles and festive outfits. Thanks to a donation of books, we were able to give away a free book to every child who came to. National Honor Society students, including former dual-language students from KMS, volunteered to help at food and activity stations, along with the Reed staff who put in many hours to make this event happen. Fiesta has become a fine celebration that staff, students and family look forward to every year. Money raised from the Fiesta goes to support bilingual materials such as novel sets and math games. Thank you for allowing us to come and share our Fiesta celebration at Reed.
Beautiful job, everyone. So, as we reflect on the Fiesta, and we look at the pillars that we, the pillars for the school district, everything that Fiesta encompasses addresses each one of those pillars. The last word I meant, our seniors showcase student success and student learning. Our families that come together to make the tamales, to cook the food, to help with the games and attend the event are evidence of our strong relationships. Our volunteer staff, non-dual and dual, that turn out for the Fiesta to make it happen speaks to our organizational strength. The diversity of our families that come together to celebrate during Fiesta represents the culture, the relationships and the diversity supported by Safe Schools pillar. So, we are proud to be Reed teachers. We are extremely proud of our students. We are forever thankful for our teachers. And we have to thank you as a board, because it's hard to find dual teachers. And this year, we had to come and ask for an emergency certification, and you made it happen, which makes this happen, which makes these kids happen. So, thank you. Can I forget this? Any questions?
I'd like to be there for the next time we make tamales. Please invite us.
Tamales making is amazing. My kids went with me last year, and it was a, "We have to go this year, so when is it happening?" So-
Yeah, I would love to come. That would be so much fun.
We'd love to have you. And thank you for attending. It was so much fun.
My son graduated from Reed last year, and he was sad that he didn't get to go this year.
He's always welcome back.
He thinks he's a middle schooler now. Well, thank you. It's amazing. So, moving on to the superintendent report. We've got the capital plan, preview of bond option for input. Superintendent Johnson?
Chairman and trustees, thank you. It's hard to follow such awesome students and teachers. Thank you guys for doing such a great job and celebrating what makes you so special. Thank you. Let me give them a moment to exit. Oh, yeah. Chairman and trustees, thank you. I'm just here to kind of give you an update and ask for your input regarding kind of some next steps that we've been working on in regards to bond, what do we do if we don't have additional funds to deal with the growth that is here incoming. So, just a little bit of, a little bit of history. You guys have lived this, so you know it. But just in case people in the audience or people who are online, we worked for almost a year with a capital plan task force comprised of citizens in the community. Trustee Johnson represented the board. We had staff. We had some students on and off in that group. And we put together a ten-year, a proposal for a ten-year plan, which you approved in the latter part of 2022. And the plan was to be proactive when it came to growth. And part of that plan was, we had three different phases, potentially four. But in the first phase was a bond that would have added, a second phase of Swan, or of Swan, yes, Swan Falls, added on to the middle school and built an elementary. And then, part of that also was to have funds to be able to take care of maintenance needs, roofs, doors, locks, HVAC, those kind of things. And we were unable to reach the supermajority required, not a majority, but not the supermajority required to pass the bond. So, what we did shortly after is we thought, "We need to learn," because we had a very collaborative involved group putting this together. And so, we started to learn. We sent out some input surveys. We did some pop-up focus groups to get input from our community. And we shared some of that with all of you. And as a result of that, we put together two groups. So, we have one group. We're calling it Managing Growth Without New Learning Spaces. Brian Graves gets to kind of coordinate this work. And the committee will be working on, what do we do if we don't have more learning spaces with the growth that's here incoming? And we talked about changing attendance boundaries, and this was part of that survey, if you remember, some of the input we received from parents. And then, secondary also address attendance boundaries. And then, the final thing we've talked about is, at least in this next phase, begin investigating a potential split shift or some sort of schedule modification at the high school level.
Hi, my name is David. I'm in third grade dual-language student. The E of Fiesta is for entertainment. Every year during Fiesta, there are two music programs. The dual-language teachers with Reed's music teacher, Miss Baker, to choose songs in both English and Spanish for one program. For kindergarten through second grade and then the fourth, third through fifth. One song, that's by a song by Alfred, has been one of the songs performed since Down Home Country Christmas started in 2000. The fifth graders perform a bilingual chant for Twelfth Night Before Christmas, which always leads to a theme song. So we also learned a fun dance to go along with the one that Ethan sang, Allegre Mingle.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Ronnie. I'm a fourth-grade dual-language student. The S of Fiesta is for senior celebration. The last five years of Fiesta, we have added a very special part celebrating the soon-to-be graduates of the dual-language program. The seniors, along with their families, come to be recognized through their college increase lines, along with how they plan to use their bilingual skills in the future. And some seniors share advice for the younger dual-language students for success. We have a hallway of posters honoring the seniors and give each one a certificate and a small gift of a Kuna dual-language hat and luggage tag. To go along with the idea that language takes you around the world, part of the money raised at Fiesta funds two scholarships for dual-language graduates awarded at Senior Awards Night, which is coordinated with the Kuna Education Foundation.
Nice job.
Hello, my name is Soa. I'm a fifth-grade dual-language student. The T of Fiesta is for tamales. Tamales are a food traditionally made and eaten for Natajaguan or Christmas Eve. The last five years, the fifth-grade families have started making the tamales that are sold at the Fiesta. It's a fun night for the families to get together. And for some of them, it's the first time they have ever made tamales. And for others, there's a chance for them to share a part of their culture and knowledge on how to make tamales. This is the year, this year we made about 600 tamales in about two hours, which is about how much time it takes for them to sell out. They definitely go fast, young.
Hello, my name is Maddie.
Hello, I'm Dora Boney. We're a fifth-grade dual-language student. The A of Fiesta is for activities. All of the activities at Fiesta are available completely free. We offered all same crafts such as scratch off, only making, and book arts. We had, we made face painting, which is always their favorite. Cornhole, a game called Bakari, and a game called Tomatodos, both were the kids. Because one candy would stay up, the students and family played the games together in both English and Spanish.
We also had a photo booth set up for families to capture the smiles and festive outfits. Thanks to a donation of books, we were able to give away a free book to every child who came to. National Honor Society students, including former dual-language students from KMS, volunteered to help at food and activity stations, along with the Reed staff, who put in many hours to make this event happen. Fiesta has become a fine celebration that staff, students, and family look forward to every year. Money raised from the Fiesta goes to support bilingual materials such as novel sets and math games. Thank you for allowing us to come and share our Fiesta celebration at you.
Beautiful job, everyone. So as we reflect on the Fiesta, and we look at the pillars that we, the pillars for the school district, everything that Fiesta encompasses addresses each one of those pillars. The, well, I'll start with Matt. Our seniors showcase student success and student learning. Our families that come together to make the tamales, to cook the food, to help with the games and attend the event are evidence of our strong relationships. Our volunteer staff, non-dual and dual, that turn out for the Fiesta to make it happen, speaks to our organizational strength. The diversity of our families that come together to celebrate during Fiesta represents the culture, the relationships, and the diversity supported by Safe Schools pillar. So we are proud to be Reed's. We are extremely proud of our students. We are forever thankful for our teachers. And we have to thank you as a board because it's hard to find dual teachers. And this year, we had to come and ask for an emergency certification. And you made it happen, which makes this happen, which makes these kids happen. So thank you. Can I forget any questions?
I'd like to be there for the next time we make tamales. Please invite us.
Tamales making is amazing.
Yeah.
My kids went with me last year, and it was a, we have to go this year, so when is it happening?
Yeah, yeah. I would love to come. That would be so much fun.
We'd love to have you. And thank you for attending. It was so much fun.
My son graduated from Reed last year, and he was sad that he didn't get to go this year.
He's always welcome back.
He thinks he's a middle schooler now. Well, thank you. It's amazing. So moving on to the superintendent report, we got the capital plan, preview of bond option for input. Superintendent Johnson?
Chairman and trustees, thank you. It's hard to follow such awesome students and teachers. Thank you guys for doing such a great job and celebrating what makes you so special. Thank you. Let me give them a moment to exit. Oh, yeah. Chairman and trustees, thank you. I'm just here to kind of give you an update and ask for your input regarding kind of some next steps that we've been working on in regards to bond. What do we do if we don't have additional funds to deal with the growth that is here incoming? So just a little bit of, a little bit of history. You guys have lived this, so you know it, but just in case people in the audience or people who are online. We worked for almost a year with a capital plan task force comprised of citizens in the community. Trustee Johnson represented the board. We had staff. We had some students on and off in that group. And we put together a ten-year, a proposal for a ten-year plan, which you approved in the latter part of 2022. And the plan was to be proactive when it came to growth. And part of that plan was, we had three different phases, potentially four. But in the first phase was a bond that would have added, a second phase of Swan, or of Swan, yes, Swan Falls, added on to the middle school and built an elementary. And then part of that also was to have funds to be able to take care of maintenance needs, roofs, doors, locks, H-back, those kind of things. And we were unable to reach the supermajority required, not a majority, but not the supermajority required to pass the bond. So what we did shortly after is we thought, we need to learn because we had a very collaborative involved group putting this together. And so we started to learn. We sent out some input surveys. We did some pop-up focus groups to get input from our community. And we shared some of that with all of you. And as a result of that, we put together two groups. So we have one group. We're calling it Managing Growth Without New Learning Spaces. Brian Graves gets to kind of coordinate this work. And the committee will be working on, what do we do if we don't have more learning spaces with the growth that's here and coming? And we talked about changing attendance boundaries, and this was part of that survey, if you remember, some of the input we received from parents. And then secondary also address attendance boundaries. And then the final thing we've talked about is, at least in this next phase, begin investigating a potential split shift or some sort of schedule modification at the high school level because that's where we're seeing the majority of our growth currently, even though we know other grades are coming. So, and then the other one, and I'm kind of working on this, not kind of, I am working on this, is really about planning for new learning spaces. And this image is from the survey results where we have a pretty good sense of what our community supported from the last bond, with the exception of the busing services, the expansion of that. So one of the things that I started thinking about was, what do I know about people? And what do I know about Idahoans? And Idahoans like choice, and they like to be able to make decisions that are fiscally responsible. And there's a lot more things about Idahoans that I would add, but for things when it comes to taxes. And so what I'm asking for your input on, and there's no action on this, obviously, but I started toying with and got input from my team, got input from our financial advisor, what if we put two options on the next bond ballot, or three options on the next bond ballot that would potentially separate these three big projects? For example, some of the input we received when it came to Swan Falls was, why didn't you just build the whole thing? So we could show the community this is what it would take to build the whole thing out. And it could be a separate question on the ballot. We could ask, do we need a new elementary school? A separate question on the ballot. And then the additions to the middle school could potentially be a separate question on the ballot. It's not something we historically have done. We've always said, here are the needs, here's the question. There are definitely pros and cons to approaching this way. And you could probably think of them right off the top of your head, why it wouldn't work and maybe why it would work. The input I received from our financial advisor was, he's also a lifetime Idahoan, and he said, I think in today's climate, choice is a good thing. So...
Have any other districts done this?
He said, yes, there were two other districts that have done this.
And?
And one was successful and one wasn't. So...
When they can, when they were not successful, did none of the choices pass?
Right. It was, there were two choices and neither passed.
They had two choices, okay.
So that is a risk. What do you guys think? That's really what this is about, is to get some input. I'm obviously going to take this to get input from the Superintendent Advisory Council too on Monday. And then our financial advisor would like to meet with the board early on, like January, February, and maybe a special session for about an hour to just talk about this in more detail and our update on our capital plan. So I'll be quiet and listen.
So what do you talk about? Three separate bonds. Are you talking about elementary bond, a middle bond, high school bond?
Yeah, that would be maybe one of the options. Probably wrap in maintenance, you know, like we need.
But what it takes rather than what, instead of just one big bond, we're breaking it down so that the community understands what the needs are for you.
Yep.
And then what is a split shift?
It can look a lot of different ways in today's environment. It could be an AM schedule and a PM schedule. So you split the day in, like, kids might start at six in the morning, be done at 12.
Usually shorter sessions instead of the 90 minutes.
Yeah, you'd have to do that too, probably.
Does that affect the secondary academics?
I lived that as a student, and so my answer would be yes, from my own experience. I grew up in Idaho, not too far away over the hill this way. And the junior high was condemned in my community, and the community didn't want to pay for a bond. And so we, when I was in eighth grade, I went to school from 12:30 to six. And I was in sports, and I missed a ton of school at the end of the day because we were playing sports. And then my freshman year, I went from six in the morning. And we know adolescents like mornings a lot. And I played sports, so I was late. And I can tell you, I don't remember much of my freshman year.
So it's probably not a good idea.
It's not something I said I would want to do to children. It could look different too. It doesn't have to be that. That's what I lived, so that's what I know, but there's other schedules. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we don't have an answer to what it would look like until we put it together and try to figure it out. And it's, I mean, obviously, it's not good.
Yeah, but some things have to be done if we don't have more spaces. We're going to have to be creative with schedules. We're going to have to be creative with where kids go to school.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand that, but at the same time, we're going to improve academics for secondary, and that's not a great answer.
Agreed.
No, but if we don't have the space and we have more kids, then we don't really have, in my opinion, we don't have a choice.
But I have two kids, one in middle school and one in high school, and that would be terrible.
Of course.
So as a parent, that's a terrible option.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So how many parents would pull their kids out of school? And then we lose funding. So then you're talking about ripple effect of that type of environment.
It was on the survey is, if we don't have more learning places, spaces, which of the horrible options would you like us to pursue? And that was the least horrible of the options for secondary. But I will tell you in the comments, which you've seen the survey, they didn't want to have to choose it, many of the parents, so...
No, I know. I didn't complete the survey because I didn't like it.
Yeah.
As a parent?
Yeah.
I'm talking about from a parent perspective, it was not good.
Yeah, agreed.
So I'm just trying to see this in my head because it's the first time we've really heard this.
Yeah, we've not done this in the past.
Never done this, haven't seen it. So we're giving the voters three choices, an elementary, a middle.
Or two.
Or two, whatever we decide, whatever we decide. And then, or, well, or go with the traditional is what you're saying. And then we look to see what they feel we need, correct? Okay, and then, but we're not talking about split shifts.
This is a separate, this is more space.
I mean, let's not go there until we have to.
Right. So it's still a question.
Yeah, it's not a good thing, but, yeah, so maybe, I guess I'm kind of open to that. I'd like to hear more of what the community thinks about that. I know that I've heard lately that we have room in the elementary, that we're not using our elementary as wise as we should. So I don't know. I don't, I haven't seen. I don't know. So I guess...
We have some capacity, but with our projections, it won't be long.
Okay. So I guess my question too is the capital plan. Is this something that they've talked about yet?
No, we haven't talked about it.
So we don't know how the community feels about it. I'd just like to hear more what the community feels on that situation. But I'm open to it.
Yeah, thank you.
So my concern is something that's very real, and it's voter fatigue. And you get a voter into the voting booth, and they read through all the language for one ballot, or for one measure, and they vote. And then they read the next one, and they, they're like, how much more money are they going to keep asking? And by the time they get to the bottom, then you're, they're done. They're not going to be voting for it. So my concern is splitting them up is, it may not get you the result that you're looking for.
You may still have the same result.
You may still have the same problem.
Well, I keep thinking we were so close. 63%, we needed the supermajority, which is 66.67, whatever.
67.
Yeah, something like that. I mean, yeah, we're so close.
Well, but I think some of the feedback is they thought we were being dishonest. So I think this might help be more transparent, breaking it down so they understand. Because I know that we thought we were being transparent, because I know I thought I was.
Yeah.
And really just allowing them to understand the knowledge of what it means for each down there.
We do, though, have the new language that's required of us since the last legislative session, which passed after we ran our bond, that would be more thorough than it already was and explain exactly, so that new language may play in your favor if you run it all together.
Do we, do we have, do we know those other two districts that actually did this?
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, but Michael has that information to share with you.
That was my question. Are they close to our type of district? I mean, are they comparable?
One was bigger, one was smaller.
I would kind of like to see what their ballot looked like.
Sure.
And the wording on that too, and how it went. And then the, I'm assuming the one that didn't pass, we heard that all three, if they had three or they had two, they all didn't pass. And then the one that did, did all three of them pass, or did they have three or two, however?
I'll bring that, I'll have him bring that in.
The other thing, I don't like telling people, if this doesn't pass, then you're going to have to do split shifts. I don't like telling people, this doesn't pass, then we're going to have to redo this. I mean, those are options that we'll have to do. But it makes it sound like we're putting guns to people's heads and saying, if you don't pass this, and this, and I don't like that.
But it's not, you're not being dishonest. Stuff is going to have to change.
And I, and I get that, but I think before we go there, we need to be more positive about what we can do instead of saying, well, if you don't do this, then this is what we're going to do.
Well, and I also like we did that last time either.
No, I don't either, but I just...
People perceived it that way. I had a few people contact me from the survey, and they're like, well, this is what you're, you're going to throw on us since we didn't pass the bond, or that's what they were saying.
Yeah, it rubbed on their, on their...
Sure.
But it's because they don't see the, they don't understand the big picture and haven't seen it all and don't understand the survey fully and why we're doing it.
And maybe I'm a person who sees the glass half full, but I'm thinking, how many people voted? 340 something?
Yeah, we didn't have either our parents.
We have over 5,000 students. Where did we miss getting people out to vote? And I keep thinking, man, we need to take a look at that. Were we as transparent? I thought we did an awesome job. I'm with Kirsty. I thought I was being as transparent as I could be, you know? But is there something that we need to do more along that line too? Getting the word out and getting people to vote. You know, people who have an actual buy-in to it.
Yeah.
So how do we do that? But I'm definitely open. I don't know how you guys feel about it. I'm open to do anything so we can pass a bond and our kids can have lower class sizes and good education. I don't want people leaving Kuna because we don't have what it takes.
I think if we can get some of those answers and look at a ballot and how it worked, and maybe see some numbers and how they worded it. Because I do see that Joyce, Joyce makes a good point that, you know, by the time you get to the bottom of it, you just want to get out of the clues.
I'm going to say yes and no or whatever.
Yeah, and you're like, and then you have this whole page. So now, now we have three different things to vote on. Maybe we have a half a page or so that explains each vote, you know, times three.
So, and I agree with you on that too.
I don't like that.
Maybe it's just you break down the numbers. It's not a whole paragraph. It's just...
The legislature requires certain language.
It does, yeah.
According to law, you have to.
So what I'm hearing you, from you, is that you're not just really opposed to it. You want more information, and it's worth us pursuing as an option to share with you. When Michael comes in his face.
Yeah, I would love to meet with Michael and have him educate us a little bit more. And I'd like to see what some of the committee members think too.
Great, we'll do that.
Yeah, if we can get some facts on the other two districts that did it and what the wording said, what it looked like on the ballot, and then talk to Michael about it too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustees. I appreciate it.
It might be a good idea, but...
It might be a bad idea. Yes.
Are we going to talk about the election dates at all, or is that something?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that, just to remind you that these are the upcoming election dates in the next year. You know, March has been taken off the option list, so we have May, August, and November as our options, should we want to act within the next year.
And I would really hope that you keep in mind that the supply chain right now is super, super slow. And once a bond is approved, we still are looking at at least three years out before we get into school.
Three to five.
Yeah. My husband, they ordered an electrical panel nine months ago. I think just barely got it. So...
We tell them for the Kuna School District, they'll be faster though.
Yeah.
Kind of into it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So we don't need any action on the consent agenda because we already approved it with the regular agenda. We still, correct? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a second.
A second.
Fall in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
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 Joy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so that... So moving on, that approves all those readings, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so moving on to delegations.
I'm sure we have enough.
Okay, no delegations. Thank you. Unfinished business, the follow-up with the ISBA convention, Vice Chairman Thomas and Trustee Nixon.
Do you want to speak first?
I, you know, every year, like Kim was saying earlier, every year they up their game. And convention was fabulous. They have a new director of learning at the ISBA. His name is Phil Gore, and he's been the director of, in that same position, and this is, I think, his fifth state. And so he brings a lot of knowledge and he brings a lot of expertise to what he does. And so I honestly, I don't know how ISBA landed him, but he did, they did. Well, okay, he has a grandson in Murray. That's how they landed him. But, but he, he's amazing. And so this year, you know, in years past, when I first started going, there were, there were some classes where you would go and you think it's going to be one thing, and it's just someplace tried to sell something to you. And you're like, that's not what I came into this class for. So there is none of that now. It, every class, almost every single workshop was reimbursable, which means that there was learning going on. And so it was, it was a fabulous event. It was, it was fun to take Michael to his first event, even though he got after me for making noise. So, you know, it, I'm not going to say it's something that I'm going to miss because I'll probably be back teaching because I still do work with ISBA to do trainings. So... Crucial for our board to be knowledgeable about the things that they should be doing and the things that they should not be doing. And it's so knowledgeable to be, it's so important to be able to lead by example for our students that, look, we're educating ourselves in our, in what we need to do. You need to educate yourselves in what you do. And so I can't say enough about the importance of being a member of ISBA and the benefits that we get from them, not just the training hours, but the legal hours and the different people that we have the ability to associate with as far as businesses and get deals. And I, it's just crucial that we are members of ISBA and we take advantage of the things that they offer. We can't forget policy. They do offer a lot of policy. And they, and they have, you know, they go down to the legislature and they spend, literally, I think they're there all day. They're longer than I am most of the time. And they, and they work so hard to advocate for the students of the state of Idaho. So I can't say enough good things about them.
So I enjoyed convention again. I love listening to a lawyer by the name of Amy White. I take as many classes as I can from her. She definitely has shown me a lot of open meeting laws, things that other districts are struggling with and things that they're doing. I also like networking with other boards. And one of the things that I kind of enjoyed was we had a breakout session where we talked with other school districts who are having problems passing bonds. And it was good to hear other people have other issues, and some are worse off than where we are. But it was fun to sit down and kind of brainstorm, what can we do as a board to help, help with the... But it was fun to sit down and kind of brainstorm, what can we do as a board to help, um, help with the buildings? There are some buildings that are even in more disarray than we have. Uh, so that was good, and, um, I enjoyed the bonding time. Uh, I enjoyed, uh, Michael being there, so thank you for coming, Michael. Uh, and just sharing together, so it was a great conference again, and I, I learned some things I hope will make me a better board member.
And one more thing, um, it never ceases to amaze me, um, to go to the classes and hear the issues that other districts are having. And they're teaching these classes, I went, well, we're already doing that, that, that's what we do. And I can't believe you're still in negotiations in November, it was due a long time ago, and, and it makes me proud to be a case man.
Okay, thanks for going to that. So the next item is, um, an update on the meeting that we have with the mayor and developers. I was just kinda, kinda giving an overview of everyone that was there, um, the mayor, um, the city, or the planning and zoning. Uh, Representative Economic Developer from the city, myself, uh, Wendy, uh, Mr. Graves, uh, Mr. Reno. Danielle was there, uh, and there was six developers, I think five or six, and then a lobbyist for the, I don't know his title exactly, but lobbyist at the state. And so we discussed, we were discussing the mitigation fees and the process that we've, um, been going for the last, I've been doing that, has it been four years yet, or is it like?
Two.
Two or three?
Yeah, formally two, but we've started the process about three years ago.
So, I mean, I think it's a, I feel like it's a positive direction that we're going and that some developers have stepped up and helped us. I know in that meeting, um, it depends on who you ask, how that meeting went. I mean, it was, and it was controversial, um, that I'm just gonna come out and say it, not sugarcoat it. Developers think that we are breaking the law and that we are gonna get sued, or the city's gonna get sued over trying to get mitigation fees. Uh, volunteer mitigation fees. So, I mean, I don't feel that that's true. Um, I feel like what we're doing is a good thing to try to help support our schools, especially since we're struggling. I mean, I know that there's a fifth grade teacher at one of our elementary schools that has thirty-six kids in a classroom. And we're constantly getting blamed for the education in the district that is subpar. But it's pretty hard to learn when you have thirty-six kids in a classroom and one teacher. So those are some of the things that we talked about. One thing that was also brought up from the developers is they would like to, um, change from supporting us with mitigation fees. To indirectly supporting us to a campaign to pass the bond. So, when the fire district passed their bond, I, I was, um, impressed with how they did it, and I asked them, how did you do this? And they said that they hired a professional company to campaign to pass that bond. So then I asked them, okay, how much did that cost? They spent a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on that campaign to pass the bond. So that was brought up with developers. And they were open to help pass, to help with a campaign to pass the bond. And I know that gets very controversial too, so. Um, just reporting on that meeting, I, I kinda, I was surprised that there wasn't any city councilman there. I wish they would have been there so they could have helped, um, just been a part of the discussion and understand how it went, so. Did you wanna add anything to that, uh, Mr. Graves or Superintendent Johnson?
Um, we're gonna meet again, I think, um, it's scheduled for Monday. Um, I'm not sure what the agenda is for the meeting, but, um, we'll see how it goes.
So you're meeting the developers again?
Yeah, and, and the mayor is facilitating the conversation.
And will this?
Monday, yeah.
Since, um, last week, yeah, the, the eighteenth, eighteenth.
And I didn't like how, like, it was hard for me to respond, I really wanna go to those meetings.
Yeah.
But the way it was set up to respond was, I don't, I don't have time to do that. To create another login password to be able to say when I can go to a meeting, it's like.
So is the city council not there because of open meeting laws, they had to publicize?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, they weren't invited.
Oh, they weren't invited, okay. So, will they be invited, I guess would be a question. We don't know, okay.
I have a concern with taking money from, or help from developers to pass a bond. Because a bond by itself is not gonna accomplish it, because there's no way that without the land donations and without the extra money. We would be able to get the community to allow us to bond for as much money as we would need. Does that make sense? Like, without them giving us some voluntary mitigation fees, or voluntary mitigation land, or however it looks. Um, it's not gonna be enough, and if they, if the builders and the developers, uh, quote-unquote, help with the bond. Then they're going to expect that you don't ask for mitigation fees, and so that's a concern for me.
Yeah, that's a con, yeah.
You gotta get concerned for all of it.
So are you going to attend again?
It's in two Mondays?
Nope, next Monday, the, the, the coming Monday, I think it's the eighteenth, yes.
Okay, and what time is it?
Let me look that up.
Russ took care of this in the past. That was my first meeting.
Yeah, nine, I knew it was in the morning, nine-thirty?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot.
It's in the, at the city hall again.
Cause I am open to going if you can't go.
Please.
Cause someone needs to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'll add you.
Thank you, there you go.
Uh, Monday the eighteenth, I could sure look if you.
Did you try to go to the last Monday?
No, I wasn't invited.
But did you show up?
Uh-uh, I don't think so, I sh, no, no.
Okay.
I, not that I'm aware of my show up.
All right.
Monday the eighteenth.
Where is that, City Hall?
City Hall, yeah, I'll make sure you have the, the information.
I could be there in the morning, afternoon, I have a meeting, so.
I wish they could do that around, I mean, I could do that for about an hour, on my lunch break. But we, uh, we'll talk about that later.
Thank you.
So consider following FFA advisor and CTE administrator to explore the possibility of allocating five acres of the ten acres donated by.
Hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, the hundred acres donated by LeVar and Wilma Thornton, um, for the use of a land lab for the agriculture classes and for the FFA, Superintendent Johnson. I pretty much just said it all, right?
Yes, you did, uh, it's a long, uh, action item there. Um, as you know, um, as Kuna continues to grow and our farms continue to be developed into homes. Um, you, you know, historically, our FFA program has relied on really strong partners with farmers and ranchers in our community. Um, and as those people tend to, you know, sell their land for development and so on. We've, we've found the need for what's called a land lab in Kuna. Um, the ag, um, Advisory Board and our, uh, teachers, um, in cooperation with our CTE administrator, has been talking about this for a while. Um, they've visited over the last couple of months, a couple of different examples of a land lab, um, in Idaho. And this isn't, this action isn't asking for your permission to make it happen, we want your permission to investigate. Um, there, there was an attempt to try to purchase some land or, and, you know, but by the time you, you do that, you might have to do some infrastructure too. Um, so when we were talking about the hundred acres, um, it, it's being developed around there, there may be, um, what we need soon. To take five acres of that land and make it a land lab. I, there would, if there were an action in the future to actually formally make it happen, there would be a presentation with the costs and all of that sort of thing. But before we get too far down the path, we wanted your permission to at least investigate it further, talk to the city, um, that sort of thing. The other, the other, you know, kind of heart side of this is that, um, LeVar and Wilma were very big supporters of our ag program. And our FFA in particular, and Flareage and everything else. And so we think it might be a nice tribute, um, to them to have five acres there. We ideally wanted it closer, but it's really not that far, you know, just around the corner up here, um, depending on where it would be placed. So, long story short, I'm just asking for your permission for us to pursue what it would take to use five of that, five acres of that hundred acres. Um, for a land lab for our FFA students and ag students.
I have one question.
Yeah.
And I love the idea of the five acres, but we have acreage over there by Silver Trail.
Yeah.
And was that looked at at all? Cause I don't, we don't have a big enough lot to put anything really on that, that I know of, that that may be a best garage, but.
No, that's, that's.
No, that's forty acres.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good chunk.
Is that forty acres over there, Silver Trail? And we could put a middle school even there, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, um, we were trying to think of proximity too, it's a little closer over this way.
It is, but I just wondered.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Yeah, we, we did, and, um, I was thinking with the subdivisions and everything that around there, it may not be the best, um, appreciated use of our land there.
Okay.
So what do they need to do to the land to make it a lab?
I don't know the answer to that, I know that anytime we wanna do anything with land, it is a lot of work to figure out. Do we have, you know, permissions and, but, you know, we, we're talking barns and outbuildings and that kind of thing, and we, because it'll be an outdoor classroom.
Right, so it's not a prior preference from the city?
Potentially, yes, yeah.
And are there any issues with zoning or anything?
Yes, that would be my guess too.
And the cost and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So investigating is meaning?
Answering this question.
All of it, yeah. But we didn't wanna go down, get too far ahead of you and start doing that without your will in that, um, work. It doesn't mean it'll happen, it just means we're hoping, yeah.
So would this would be a motion to allow the district to go and do some research on this idea?
And come back to you with the results.
Yeah, do you have a motion?
Thank you.
So, okay. So, Russ?
I'll second that.
Okay.
That was quick, what did Russ say?
I like it.
Oh, so moved, okay, got it, so moved, sound like soon.
All in favor of Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I like it. Okay, so consider, we're gonna go, Director Ready, you wanna talk to us about doors and door hardware?
I'm super excited to talk about doors and door hardware. Um, I'll probably leverage, uh, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Assistant Superintendent Beckettall, I promise I know your name and your title.
It's hard to say.
So just a little refresher for you, back in July, um, we submitted and worked on a grant that the governor had, you know, done for all the schools in the state of Idaho. Uh, securing our future grant, so, in, in order for us to apply for that grant, part of the thing that was required of it was a motion from you all that you supported that work. So we did that, you approved it, we started working, um, we've been doing several projects here and there. Um, but part of the work includes like standardizing our front door entries at all of our buildings. Um, you know, adding a few components here, changing out some doors, some door hardware, all that kind of stuff. Uh, and the next motion will also talk about, or the act, next action item, I guess, would talk about some fencing that would be needed in some of our sites. So, the ask from you tonight is that, um, because the, the dollar threshold is over fifty thousand. Um, it requires your approval for us to move forward on, on that. So we went and did the required two bids from two different vendors, um, which was, uh, fun, um, to do. And so as you can see, these are two bids that we got back, uh, DNA Door is the lower bid and, and they were the ones we started with. We do a lot of work with this company, um, they help us with lots of different door projects, and so, uh, we would ask that, that you would take action and tell us that it's okay to go forward, uh, with DNA.
At first I thought that was three different, and I'm like, why are we even talking about the first two? But I get it now, I get it.
Yeah.
So our, our presentation has the district office on there as well, is that taken out now?
It, it, it is because, um, the grant, I'm sorry, I apologize for that, the, the grant only allows us to work at school sites.
Okay.
We need to do some work here at the district office as well, and so when those companies came out and we were asking them to bid projects first, I asked them to, um, do that as well. But it's, it can't be included in this part of the asking.
Gotcha.
Yeah, thank you, that's a good catch.
Who, um, so this, is this grant approved?
It is, and we already have the funding for it, like this is.
Was that the two thousand seventeen bond, or was it bond?
No, it was, no, the grant was two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Oh, two hundred and sixteen thousand, okay.
Yeah, we already started doing stuff with it, didn't we?
Yes, yes.
I was gonna say, I think we would have other ideas, okay.
It's just that some of the projects exceed the spending threshold that I can do without your approval.
Yeah. So we have a motion.
That's what we're here tonight.
I'll make a motion that we approve DNA Doors bid at sixty-one thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars for the doors.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think I have the next three, do you want me to just?
Yes.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Uh, all go as fast as possible, this is the same grant, same situation, it's just fences instead of doors. Um, so we need to do a bit of work at a few of our school sites, um, to kind of standardize that man trap, as you would, right? To have a place where a person kind of enters the front part of the school and then we can validate who they are and they can talk to the office or whatever, um, some of those kinds of things, so.
So fencing, is that meaning like fencing the school yard?
Some of it is, and some of it is not, um, yeah. I can explain the different projects probably pretty quickly if you want me to. Um, so the Hubbard, as you know, Hubbard is an interesting building, it's got two different, um, physical buildings. And so we're gonna put some ornamental wrought iron fencing around the front so that a little kid can't just bolt out the front door and be in the parking lot or the street. And also the street and the parking la, parking lot don't have access to the door, and then the kids, they're, this ornamental wrought iron fence would create kind of that.
Similar to it, in, like, what's that, Indian Creek, correct?
We're gonna do some work at Indian Creek in, in addition to kind of create that same space there, this isn't doing anything in the back.
Yeah.
Indian Creek has some of the existing. Ornamental wrought iron, the, yeah, they have.
So you're not creating a security fence around the playground?
Not, not yet, we would love to do that, but, um.
It's, it's, we're, we've got another round of this securing our future grant that's due January fifteenth, which is very intense for us. It's gonna, Jason, we were just talking about it today, it's gonna take us probably two days to just go through all of the paperwork. But that one is worth, like, we could do, we could fence at Indian Creek, we could fence at Crimson Point, it's just gonna take us a ton of effort. We'll do it, I mean, we're gonna do it, it's just, that's gonna come in phase two, we didn't get that much money to do all of that with this two hundred and sixteen.
I'm just clarifying, thank you, to make sure.
But that's what we wanna do, cause we do wanna do more.
Right.
It's about safety, basically.
It's a safety.
This is a safety issue.
Yep. So, two quotes from two different vendors, um, I think we would recommend, the Meridian Fencing is the, is the vendor there.
So for fencing, are we just talking about in the front for all of the schools?
Um, Silver Trail is a little bit on the side, if you, that kind of open area, that forty acres that we have to the west. It's fencing that's on that side of the building, just for, I think it's like kinder classrooms there at the front. Um, as it's built now, there's, there's exits from those classrooms that then puts those students immediately into the parking lot. Um, so we're gonna put like a four-foot chain link fence right there just to create a bit of a traffic flow. So that those little guys don't just, like I would, run straight into the parking lot, you know?
See long and.
Yeah. Start ripping your backpack on, ah, school's out. Anyway, um, so yeah, that Silver Trail project is there, Ross is again, um, some ornamental wrought iron fencing there at that front entrance to help create that man trap. Cause currently that building, the way it's built is, once you're in that first set of doors, now you're into the office, you're into the library. So we would have that space where we have a bit of a buffer. Swan Falls is pretty simple, there's just, I think, a couple of feet, um, on the east, southeast side of the building. That we just need to put some chain link and probably. that we just need to put some chain link and probably a fence there. And then again, Indian Creek and Hubbard at the front of the building.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put out to bid for fences through Meridian at forty-six thousand.
We accept the bid.
We accept the bid of forty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-three cents.
Do we have?
For, for Meridian fencing. Thank you. Gonna miss.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor of Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Want to go on to the next one?
Sure. Appreciate that. So, this next one is, is an update and an ask for you. So, in December of two thousand twenty-two, the board approved allocating four hundred thousand dollars from our two thousand seventeen bond money to work on replacing some of the classroom projection technology that we were using across our district that was very old. Well, it was old enough and it was outdated, that it was falling apart, and we need to replace it. So, you may have seen some of these around, they were smart projectors and/or smart boards that teachers could touch and write on and those kinds of things.
Love it.
Love it, right, yeah. I had one in my classroom years ago, too. So, those were old, and they needed to be replaced. And so you guys allocated some of these funds for us, and so over the last year, our team has been working really hard to determine what is kind of our standard deployment solution for our classrooms that would replace some of this technology. So as you can see, we demoed seven different products, we evaluate, evaluated those products on their usability and their proof of concept in our system. We saw feedback from our stakeholders, we got ninety-nine people that gave us feedback. I decided not to round it to a hundred, because it was actually ninety-nine. And then we kind of narrowed the scope, and then from there, after we really narrowed that scope, we got super granular. Our technology guys, the really smart people got, they got really granular in, in what the different products do and don't do, and what they do well, and, and price and those kinds of things. So can we go to the next slide? So, really, we, after we kind of, our technology team did a whole big ask, like, what all of our options out there? So we narrowed it down to these five options as things that we could present to people and say, hey, what do you think? So, when we started August, we took these different solutions, we asked our administrator and our district office people to, what do you think? We want to present these to you, our technology team presented them. They did a really good job, you know, just being unbiased and just like, here's what it does, here's what it doesn't do. And, and we looked at those different options. As you can see, some of them rose to the top pretty quickly. And so based on that feedback, we then took and narrowed it down to three from those five, the top five. And Troy, if you can go to the next, please. And we asked, and we took, we took these three options and we went to our teachers. And we got seventy-one different teachers that gave us feedback on the different options that they would prefer. And the touch panel TV quickly rose to the top as a, as a strong favorite. And, and that really didn't surprise us in a lot of ways, because it's very similar to that smart technology that we've had in our school district. And in those touch panel TVs, we had two different vendors as an option. We had a smart touch panel TV, so these are TVs that look just like these, except that you can touch them and interact with them, they can be a virtual whiteboard, you can write on PDFs or slides and lots of different things. So we looked at these two different vendors and talked to them about price and different makes and models. These things all come like cars, right? Touch panel TVs, you can get the Pinto, or you can get the Lexus, or BMW, or whatever, Tim drives a Lamborghini probably. But we looked at the different options of those and really narrowed the scope from there. And this is where we got super granular. Troy, you can go to the next, thank you. We, we deployed several different versions and options of touch panel TVs around our school district and let teachers use them for a while. There's one here at the district office even that we demoed for a bit. We have one at the tech center, we have a few deployed in classrooms around. And based on all of that feedback and, and all the analysis that we did, we narrowed it down to adopting the ViewSonic panels as, as our best option. Honestly, maybe a little bit sad, because I was hoping that the smart panels would work, but they just are not cost effective. The one, they, they gave us two different versions, and the one that really does all the things that we needed to do is double the money of basically the one we can afford and the one that we would be able to adopt. So, we're gonna go with the ViewSonic one, it does all these great things, it, it does cool stuff, like, students can share their screens, we can display messages and not call and interrupt the classroom. I know, Kim, as a teacher, probably, it's really frustrating when you're in the middle of a lesson and somebody calls your classroom, you have to walk to your phone, send a kid out. We can, office managers can push notifications to these, like, hey, let Sally out of class, her mom's here. That kind of limits some of those disruptions. And there's a lot of other things they're able to do. So, we're asking that we would use, of that four hundred thousand dollars that you allocated, we want to buy a hundred and ninety-six of these devices, three hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and four, bless you.
Yeah.
I created, I asked our vendors to give us a little bit of a buffer in our first go, because we're gonna have to buy some whiteboards and some different things as we rearrange the front of classrooms. We don't want to just take a bunch of whiteboards down and replace them with nothing and just a screen. We want to be able to give the teachers those, maybe we have to buy some four-foot whiteboards on the sides and wall anchors and stuff like that to get them installed.
Can you be more explicit, a hundred and ninety-six classrooms, what does that, elementary, secondary, where are we looking at?
That's a great question, thank you for hitting me to the wall on that. It's, it's really, I think it's gonna have to start with need. There's, you know, those classrooms that have that stuff that really needs to be replaced yesterday or a week ago, we're gonna have to start there. That's predominantly gonna be elementaries.
Okay. So you're talking a little bit in each elementary, so it'll be kind of fair that each elementary would get so many? Or is it gonna be maybe one elementary, what's it looking like?
I can't say that it's gonna be like this elementary gets all new to start, because some of them, we've been in this space over the last couple of years where we didn't really have this standard deployment. And so we were putting in, one of the options that was up there was one of the, one of, there's a lot of those, they're called wakecom tablets.
Okay.
There's a lot of them deployed around in different classrooms.
So you're gonna go by need, basically? So whatever the need is and that type of thing.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, it, this one is the two thousand seventeen bond budget, that's where we're getting this forty thousand, four hundred thousand, if I'm correct?
Yep.
Okay, so.
I do want to point out that the hundred and ninety-six classrooms does not get us all of our classrooms.
Oh, I know that, that's why I was asking.
We have more to go.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was asking you, who is gonna be getting them?
Yeah.
Okay, those are my questions.
So you're not too. Close, yeah. We talked Thursday as I did the.
Motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and put out, or not bid, but what are we doing? We're taking this in, three hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and four dollars.
Yeah, I think the motion really from you is to give me permission to go and spend.
You have permission.
A hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm giving you permission, Jason.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'm making a motion that we give permission for Jason to go out and take a look at getting the TVs for a hundred and ninety-six classrooms at three hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and four dollars.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Kim?
Aye.
Aye? Russ?
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks.
Okay, one more ask.
One more.
Yeah, then you can be done with me.
The Chromebooks.
Yes, Chromebooks. So, as you know, we have one-to-one device deployment for our students. We provide a, a device for every kid in our school district. And that obviously requires money, and it's not usually cheap. So, we, you know, to start the next school year, we need to lay the groundwork now and be buying devices so that when school starts next August, that we have those devices here, they're on site, they're tagged, they're enrolled in our system, and they're ready to be deployed. And that stuff, that's normal technology work that our guys would do every summer. But we need to buy some more devices so that we can be ready for that. Chromebooks is like a moving target, because the prices change, the styles change, the bells and whistles change. So, over the past several weeks, our, our technology team has gone through looking at, we actually looked at four different devices. We cut one out immediately, because we're like, we know this isn't gonna go because of how it was built. So we looked at these three different devices, my guys, they're geniuses, they start taking these things apart, you got pieces of computers flying everywhere. And they did a Rubik analysis of all these different criteria and what they do well and what they don't do well. And these two devices, the Lenovo and Acer, came out, scored basically head-to-head as far as their ability and all the different things that they do. So, the next thing is the price we look at. And the Acer, the vendor that quoted me on the Acer devices, this is like the Black Friday special, it's kind of a one-time deal. In fact, he was like, I need to know if you want these, because I gotta set them aside. And we don't really have any Acer devices in our school district currently. That would be a whole new add for us. But we have pretty much, I would say, seventy, eighty percent of our student, current student devices are these Lenovo Chromebooks right here. And then the Dell was priced significantly higher. So, like you can see in the bottom, vast majority of those devices are Lenovos already in our district, and we have parts for those, we have training for those, our guys are used to working on those. I don't know if you guys are aware, but middle schoolers sometimes can be hard on devices. We repair an unbelievable amount of Chromebooks, because keys break, screens crack, and I think the repairability and the, the speed at which we can repair things is probably, we would say, better if we stick with a device that we already know. And we've taken a lot of them apart and put a lot of them back together, and we have a lot of extra parts around our school district. So I realize that those devices are a little bit more per device. And you're free to do what you want, but I think our recommendation and our ask that you would give me, our team, permission to go and purchase the Lenovo devices and start working on getting those deployed for our next school year.
How many are you purchasing?
Six hundred. Which is usually gonna be enough to do our freshman class, what is that, freshman class and then maybe a few other spaces around our school district.
Just for everyone that's here, and I know that we have, like, students do put down the deposit or something, like, parents are responsible if there's some unwarranted damage to them and it's not normal wear and tear. Can you talk about that a little bit, what that looks like?
Sure. Probably not super detailed, but yes, we have a device deposit where parents can pay a device at the beginning of the school year. They have thirty days from the first day of school, basically, to, or if a student enrolls in December, they have thirty days from their first day of enrollment to pay that deposit, that device deposit. And that allows them, I think, a one free repair, don't quote me on this off the top of my head, we'd have to pull up the website to double check, but it allows some cheaper repairs for the first or second repair on that device and lost or replacement or whatever. If they don't pay that deposit, then those families are kind of like looking at, exhorting that cost.
If you lose a charger, you have to replace it.
Is that experience there?
Trustee, Russ, how do you know that so well?
I know, because we talk about it daily.
I had this conversation where they said, charge your computer before you go to school. I don't know where my charger's at.
Don't let anyone borrow your charger.
But just so everybody knows, there's some accountability for this.
From the students and the parents.
Yes.
I do have a question, is there, there's nothing in statute or law that tells us we have to take the lowest bid, correct?
Not on this.
Not on this, okay.
It's kind of like curriculum, it's a service that we give it.
For students.
Okay, because it's for students. And like, construction.
Land is not coming in.
I'm kind of a cheapskate, so it's really hard not to pass up the hundred and fifty-five. But I'm gonna tell you, at looking at your, and I'm glad you guys did the scale, one to ten, because looking at that, it seems like if they break apart or have issues, they're easier for us to fix, we have the parts. And that makes it cost-saving to me. So, I have no problem, I don't know how the other people feel, with Lenovo, it's a middle of the road, it looks like.
They're, they're actually really great devices. We've had very, very few issues with them.
So, I guess that's kind of my feeling, I don't know how anybody else feels.
So with the extra, what, thirty-eight dollars, that it would be, how many more devices could we get with the lower cost? And does that make any difference?
We did do that math, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, you're probably better at math, public math especially.
I can buy by three.
We could get more, yes, for sure. I think six hundred gets us enough for this year.
And that's, that's mainly what I needed to know, is if, if that covers our needs or if we're gonna come up short, you know, that, that kind of makes a difference.
We do have enough, this would cover us, and we have a few still that we can deploy that would give us enough for next year. If I was standing here a year from now, I might ask you for a different, I might recommend something differently if we're in the same place next year, but I don't know what next year for sure we'll hold there.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve, so there's the number at the top, and then there's also the, the service contract, right? So, don't we need to do the bigger number at the bottom?
We do not need to, this is not a requirement expectation. Really, we're approving this, and yeah, this is an added cost that we can keep or remove, which I am good either way on that.
Okay, there's still two different numbers, though, there's one thirty-three, one fifty, and there's one thirty-three, eight hundred, so.
So this is the devices, this is the management, white glove, service, and this is the total of those.
So you're wanting that number at the very top, the one thirty-three, one fifty? That you have in bold at the very top?
Yep. This is really kind of the main focus, right?
So, I'd move to approve.
Do you see the difference?
Yeah.
There's a.
Because there's a difference in the product.
See, you've got.
No.
Approve one thirty-three, one fifty, and it should be one thirty-three, eight hundred.
Oh, you mean the slide was different?
Yeah, the top of the slide, the title.
That's a typo, yes, this is the actual invoice, I apologize.
Okay. So I'd move to approve the purchase of the.
Thank you.
Lenovo Chromebooks for a hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor of Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye? Kim?
Aye.
Joy? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to the trustee election results. Do we?
All of this is, I need to have a motion approving the results from Ada County and Canyon County.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the results of the election of Ada County, from Ada County and Canyon County.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor, Joy?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, moving on. Request for qualifications for professional service for the school district, CFO Feather?
Chairman Grant, trustees, believe me or not, but the budget season is around the corner. For me, it starts next month. And, and just like with personal finances, it's a good practice to go through all your bills and contracts and just analyze whether what you pay is reasonable or not. And the next year is, is a very important year, because, just a reminder, we have been operating without a supplemental levy this year. And the next year already has a nickname, everybody calls it, at least, you know, at the State Department and between school districts, a federal funding cliff year. And the reason for that, all the federal grants that we received during the two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, they're going to expire by the end of this year. So, we're kind of going into next year, you know, where we, we don't know whether we're gonna have supplemental levy or not. And we already know we're not gonna have federal funds. And we have been preparing for the next year, that's why we have a very healthy fund balance. But it's also seems fair and considered to be a good practice to go through. But it's also seems fair and considered to be a good practice to go through all the expenditures and review the expenditures, because building a budget this year will require a lot of attention, and that's why we're starting in January versus March, kind of a few months ahead of time. So with that said, we kind of pick the professional services, and the table represents the difference between our initial contract several years ago, and some of them are as old as two thousand seventeen, and the current rates, the most recent bill we pay. And as you can see, it's been a lot of years because the providers are great, you know, never had any issues with them. But as you can see, the cost nearly doubled or tripled over the course of several years. And the explanation is very reasonable, inflation, increase in enrollment. For example, liability, the prices went up because of the fire, you know, within the pool of districts. So something happens and then they contribute a lot, it's just like a health insurance. Then the premiums for all districts increase because they have to compensate their losses. Our workers' compensation is always based on the prior year claims, and it seems like there were a lot of claims within the last two years, some of them were physical and we can, you know, I didn't investigate the reason. But, and then, as you can see, and increased unemployment as well, as you can see, the methodology that they use, and it's good to go because there are a lot of vendors in the valley. And that's not a nonprofit organization, this is a poor-profit organization. So maybe it's a good idea to go and shop around and see what other companies offer, what kind of methodology they use. Audit is usually a flat fee, and then it depends on additional federal grants that the state requires them to review. So probably also good to do to shop around and see how much other districts are paying. And maybe now that the federal grants are going away, maybe some companies will offer a different fee. And insurance consultants, so they usually charge, it's a company of professionals, they go out and they shop for health insurance for us, that look, currently, we're contracted with Blue Cross. So they check the rates, they look for, they're acting in our best interest, and, you know, they work within our budget, they also make sure that the premiums are reasonable and affordable, and then they charge us per employee. So, and, you know, we have been with them for several years, and maybe we can look for other groups and see what kind of services do you offer to charge per employee, you know, to insurance percentage. Maybe there are other companies, health insurance companies, maybe there could be a self-insured plan. Or would you saw it, Brian, when we offered insurance plan?
Yeah, so.
Self-funded.
Self-funded.
Self-funded plan, so there are so many options. So it's, it's a, it's a good, it will be a good year to review our expenses and services that we have.
Oh, Mary, I do wanna put a plug in for having an insurance consultant. Last year, when we were in negotiations, we started out, they were gonna, our insurance rate was gonna be twelve percent, and they got us down to, what was it, six and a half or something like that?
Six and a half percent.
So having them, it was a lifesaver for us.
A lifesaver, agreed, agreed.
So the current workers' compensation, or compensation, that's just for the Kuna School District that are paying?
Correct, that's, that's ours.
So it's what happened in our, wow. And then also the audit, that's a huge increase also, wow.
It's time, it's time to go to the bidding for all this.
Yeah, I think it is.
It's time to shop it around.
Time to shop around, and I, yeah.
It's a good practice for us to do.
I try to do that at my house, too, we shop around.
Yeah, we need, we need that. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion to shop around now.
I'll make a motion that we give CFO Feather permission to send out requests for qualifications for professional services for the district.
And I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Joy?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
I had no idea we were paying that much, wow.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, thank you.
Okay, Director Graves, you wanna talk to us about a steamer?
Speaking of shopping around, one of the trustee chairman, or trustee, chairman and trustees, thank you. One of the things we've been doing is shopping around for a while, looking at redoing our back freezer that we get, all the food comes into us, and this was one of the last two thousand seventeen bond. And because we've been shopping, because we haven't got bids, because it's still been working, Val's been a little bit patient, and her steamer went out at Christmas point, and she would like to do an emergency by a steamer instead of that back freezer with that money. This was the only bid she can get, and the other company said that they would give us a bid as soon as we gave them the, as soon as we accepted their offer, and then they would come in and tell us what the parts cost. Their bid was over this, without parts. So this was the only bid that we actually have in hand, that she can get this product in and fix that Christmas point so we can go back to cooking food.
Yeah, can you make that bigger?
No, thank you.
Is this cost more or less than the back?
We gave them eighty-eight thousand to shop, so this is just re, we're just like at home when something breaks, instead of buying this, you get to buy that.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the steamer for the child nutrition kitchen. That, oops, you gotta make that bigger, I cannot see the price.
Val shows a concert, and she used me as her substitute.
Okay, for fifty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
I might reconsider, since she said a concert.
No, she said, I need that Kuna High.
Oh, okay.
She gets a pass.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so...
Yeah, this is probably the second favorite thing, I still read it, I'm gonna read it on my agenda.
Hey, do you wanna leave us in this discussion?
I do. I know when you guys made this committee, it was exciting policies they were looking for. This quarter is a lot of Elmira, one Jason, and one Allison, so I will use them if you guys have any questions, but otherwise, I'll quickly give you summaries. Ready? Eight twenty is the annual statement of financial condition. We recommend to amend, and this recommendation is based on updates with additional information from Idaho Code twenty-two seven oh one and references to Idaho Code sixty-one oh six A.
I'll make a motion that we approve policy eight twenty on its first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye. Kim?
Aye.
Sorry.
Joy?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, moving on to eight twenty-two.
Yeah, when you jump into the financial ones, they're really cut and dry, there wasn't a lot of options for or choices. Eight twenty-two is the audit of financial statements. Again, recommend to amend based on updates and realization based on Idaho Code sixty-seven four fifty.
Agreed, Russ.
Broker record, I think we were done in thirty-five minutes with the policy committee, because again, there's just not a lot to debate.
So when you cross out the M D N A shell, are you replacing all that information with G A S B thirty-four? Right there for you. Hey, students, you struck out all of that stuff.
Down over on the other side, yeah, right there.
So you're striking all of that out to replace the information required by the G A S B thirty-four? Or you just don't need it?
And I can speak to that. So, so pretty much before, in the past, the G A S B thirty-four keeps changing each year. For example, the auditors come back, we have to analyze this, we have to analyze this, and, and the decision was, why would we waste the process, let's just put G A S B thirty-four. So every time when they update their requirement, so we automatically comply with it.
And G A S B is not the great one, but it's a governmental account.
So, yeah, not the great one.
There's a language arts teacher.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't resist the joke, but, yeah, G A S B, governmental account.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve policy eight twenty-two, audit of financial statements on its first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Joy? Okay, motion carries, moving on to eight twenty-four.
This will be an adoption of a new policy for us. Eight twenty-four is a financial emergency, so this allows us, when in it we ever had to go into clear financial emergency, this would give us a policy to follow.
And this was put into place by the legislature during the recession. So that's kind of some history on this. So instead of Idaho Code sixty-seven, it's with the Idaho law, is it, yes?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve financial emergency policy number eight twenty-four, first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries, moving on to eight thirty-six.
Eight thirty-six is investments, is the name of the policy, and it is a recommendation to amend based on updates and revisions to Idaho Code thirty-three seven oh one and at the bottom, new legal reference.
I'll make a motion that we approve policy eight thirty-six investments on its first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to eight thirty-eight.
Eight thirty-eight's activity funds, the recommendation is to amend. Other, it's adding updates to the signature authority, monthly board reviews, also revised legal references.
I mean, just so the public knows that this is, I mean, been reviewed by the committee, it's been reviewed by our legal counsel as well, so, just so everybody knows that.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy eight thirty-eight, activity funds, on its first reading.
Do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second that. On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to eight forty, payroll.
Correct, recommendation again to amend, and we'll be combining this policy with one at the very bottom, about eight forty-two, to make one payroll, single policy.
So see, basically, this is just what the state tells us to do, and that's all we're approving.
Yeah, that's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I am looking for the right one to filibuster, but I haven't.
Go Russ.
Go Russ. I'll make a motion that we accept the policy on payroll, policy number eight forty, first reading.
Do we have a second?
I second.
On favor, Joy?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye, Russ?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Got to keep people on their toes by going back and forth here. Okay, moving on to eight fifty-two.
Eight fifty-two is payment for goods and services. This was a big kind of conglomeration of four different policies that you'll see towards the bottom. Recommendation is to amend and do a name change. We'll combine policies eight fifty-eight, eight sixty, making one single payment for goods and services policy.
So are we removing any policies for that?
Yeah, they, and I know they changed, there's like six of them that we'll remove.
Okay.
All in one person.
I don't need it. We done, done that type thing. I'll make a motion that we accept the policy payment for goods and services, policy number eight fifty-two, first reading.
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to nine forty-two.
Now we're leaving the Elmera's section and moving to Jason's. Nine forty-two is acceptable use of internet, computer, and network resources. They combined all three, they combined student and staff all into one policy. So the recommendation is to adopt, this is a new policy, we'll be combining policies six ninety-six, six ninety-eight, making one single acceptable use internet, computer, network resource policy for all staff and students, updating that course with Idaho Code and legal references, doing a lot of handbook updates and procedures.
So with the compliance for the policies and media changes, are those some different policies? Didn't we already do?
We kept the four eighty-one, we kept the social media one because it was, it's, it really is more for our coaches, our advisors, and our activities. So we kept that separate, and kept the procedure of meeting with our coaches every year. Allison and I do do that, or I go do that, if she thinks me, just to keep our social media clean with our coaches.
So that would apply to the social media that we do?
A little bit, but we also kept forty-one separate, we didn't, we didn't do that, we didn't combine it with that.
Okay. So the new title is communications with public and content?
It's the one right before that, acceptable use of internet, computer, and network resources.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve policy nine forty-two, acceptable use of internet, computer, and network resources on its first reading.
Do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second. On favor, Joy?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye, Russ?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to ten fourteen.
Yeah, I'm leaving Jason's room, going to Allison's, this is a recommendation to adopt a new Kuna School District policy on communications with the public.
And what's different about it, just the stuff that you marked out?
It, it's just new to us, this, so this is a policy that she, I...
Yes.
Yeah.
Nope, maybe not.
We have it.
You guys have it.
We have it.
But there's, it's new to us, it's not a policy that we had before.
So did the other policy we just approved have the same privilege?
Remember that we're updating policies that, it's been a while since we've updated, so this is an update to a policy that we just never had had before, and we would like to accept it now and adopt it to have, policy to go back to how we communicate with the public.
Do we have a motion?
In the future, it's probably better on these adopts to just give you guys the clean version because we're not, we're not making the changes that you're seeing because we never had the policy.
Right. I think it's a policy we're gonna need more and more.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt policy ten fourteen, on first reading, communications with the public. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Thank you.
Aye?
Aye.
Joy?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the removal of the following policies. You have to say one fell swoop.
Yeah, this was, this was a change.
Yes. You could make the motion, Russ.
Russ, please do.
Can I, can I use this term?
Yeah.
No, I make a motion to remove policy eight forty-two, payroll periods, policy eight fifty-four, cancellation of checks, policy eight fifty-eight, payment for goods and services, policy eight sixty, purchase orders, policy eight seventy-four, personnel records, policy six ninety-six, computer software, and policy six ninety-eight, acceptable use of internet, computer, and network resources for students.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, on favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Aye, Kim?
Aye.
Joy?
Is this the final, or we have two more reads?
You have two more reads.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so good at the border, Kuna High School, hundred-year celebration, February eleventh.
Yeah, I don't mind talking about it. We had a great time, Friday, was it, Saturday night, we went through, we were in the Christmas parade and handed out flyers to kick off our hundred-year celebration event. And then, just so you know, I am hot on the trail. And then, just so you know, I am hot on the trail of a graduate that is a hundred years old, graduated in nineteen forty-two, still living. And here's the little caravan, or whatever you call it. Her son was my husband's locker partner. Go figure that out. So anyway, so I'm excited about this. Please mark your calendars. We'd love for the community to join in as we celebrate our community of students and graduates and alumni. I think that's it.
What's that? Go ahead.
What time is the assembly on?
What's that?
I don't know, we get that, yeah.
What'd you say?
Times for the assemblies.
It's, it's ten o'clock. I do know it.
Oh, you do?
I do. February ninth at ten o'clock, but we're asking the graduates to be there at nine, or that's what I've been asking them to be there so that they can set up. Yeah, it's gonna be a lot like the veterans. They'll come in by decades. Yeah, we're, we're, you're coming in for the, what, eighties, nineies? Nineties for you. Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. I, I did, I did have something that I wanted to say. I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget what to say, so please forgive me. I've been serving on the board of this amazing district for eight and a half years. We've had struggles and we've had grand wins. I've spent many, many hours in the boardroom on committees, in the schools, and representing Kuna at the state level. I do not regret not one single moment. I am immensely proud of the things we have, now I can't read what I wrote. We have accomplished, including building Swan Falls High School and subsequently the C T E department. I cannot wait to see what happens in the department next. We have become much more transparent, and we know shit, shit, saved our taxpayers millions. We have up-to-date curriculum and technology, and while there will always be more that can be done, we truly have a great district, one that is an envy of others across the state. A big thank you is deserved by all of our administration, our teachers, and staff for their unwavering support and care of our students. So here, at my last meeting, as a board member, I want to make sure the staff, the community, and the kids know that it is in my immense pleasure to represent them, and I am humbling, I am humble and grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joy.
Pretty ready to have a motion to adjourn, because it'd be my honor to do that.
So communicating as leaders, we'll shop Boise School District Board, or Boardroom, January twenty-third, five thirty to nine.
Is that I S B A?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Russ? Like to make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.